We'll take it.
It works.
Works for me, too.
It's all good.
Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of August the ninth. Madam Clerk, would you read your roll call, please?
Mr. Cantle, Mr. Shyland, Ms. Gray, Mr. Moore, Ms. Reclu, Mr. Shiverducker, Mr. Vaughn, and Mr. West. Okay, six council members present, two absent.
Okay, very good. You all rise with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us again this evening. We welcome you and thank you for leaving us with the invitation.
Pleased, sir. Father in heaven, we're grateful for the blessings you've given us this day, and though it's warmed up again, we certainly appreciate the cooler days that we've had from the intense heat of late July. Grateful, Lord, for the rain, and I pray that meaning as well, realizing that some were flooded. But for the rain to come and for the crops and yards and pastures to be as beautiful as they are, very unusual for this time of the year, and we want to give you the thanks for providing the wonderful rains of summer. We pray for those that may be recovering from flood plains, that you bless them and help and encourage them. For our community, Lord, we're really busy. I see the city workers in their boots, busy on the ground with overlays and striping our streets and curbs and doing a lot of summer repair and construction. Bless our city workers, especially with the heat rising again over the weekend. Meet with them in the work that you've called them to do. We pray for public safety, our firefighters and police officers, both their safety in their duty as well as during the school session that will begin next week again with the colleges and public schools and parochial schools beginning a new term. Bless all of our public safety people and make us all aware to heed the school zones and provide our children with a safe community. We lift up, Lord, those that we continue to pray for as part of the city family. Would not be limited to just my list, but I will name the following. I pray, Lord, for Mrs. Bush Joost, for Gabriel Polston, Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Bill Laswell, and any and all others who need your touch tonight. For this session, for this meeting, I pray, Lord, for the leadership of our mayor and council persons, for the city administration, for those who lead departments throughout our city government and into the field. Bless their work and this session tonight and the community that will be here to share in this meeting. May it be that the results are pleasing to you. Guard our every step and find us all faithful, helping one another. Till we meet again, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Good evening. Our next item on the list this evening is a public hearing. Has to do with... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Comments from visitors. Before every council meeting, we set aside a time for anyone present who would like to share concern with the city council concerning something in the city. And again, at this time, all we do is ask that you limit your comments to five minutes and give us your name and your address, so at this time I'll call anyone to the podium who'd like to address the city council with a concern. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the public hearing. Public hearing has to do with establishing a tax rate for the city for the coming year of 2017. The hearing will... The agenda for the hearing will be as follows. I'll call three times for anyone who would like to speak in favor... Or, excuse me, in opposition of the tax rate. And then I'll do three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter that we're considering, which is the tax rate. So at this time, I'll make the first call. Is anyone... Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to this tax rate? Or have any questions on? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed tax rate? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed tax rate? Okay, thank you. There will now be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate. First call, is anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Again, no one's coming forward, so therefore we'll go for the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Very good. This public hearing will now be declared closed, and we'll move back to our regular agenda. Thank you. Now, consider unfinished business. And the first item under unfinished business has to do with the asphalt overlay. Again, Mr. Kyle, are you gonna... Do you have anything to talk about there? I'm sure you do. We'll be considering this further in the meeting, later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we received bids on the asphalt overlay. Christensen Construction is the low bidder. His bid was about $85,000 over what we had budgeted for this year, so we had to look at the list of streets that we were considering and minimize the amount of work that we were doing. So myself and the mayor and Mr. Johnson and some council members took a look at the roads that we were considering and have reduced the list down. It started with... What the bid included started with sidewalk work, curb and gutter work, and asphalt overlay on both Grand Street and Ninth Street. And also included gravel to asphalt street, which is by our warehouse on Brookside Drive, which is a good stretch. Also included an asphalt overlay on Washington and Vine Street by the bridge that we... Just the little sections by the bridge that we replaced last year. And also included milling and reclaiming to gravel, log cabin road and Hilltop. Included a little bit of milling work on Oak Street for drainage purposes and some sidewalk work on Sixth Street. So from that list we had to... That I just named to you, we had to reduce that down. And we started with taking out the milling of Hilltop, which saved about $17,000. Washington Street was... The overlay of Washington Street was taken out, which was about $12,000. We also took out the sidewalk work on Sixth Street, which was about $40,000, $40,000 to $41,000. And we also reduced the amount of asphalt overlay on Grand Street. We took out the section from Ninth to Tenth on Grand Street, so it still left the major section by the middle school. So it was just a little piece there, and that saved us, I think, around $11,000, $12,000, something in there. So adding all that up, we get to a reduction of about $83,000, which puts us real close to that.
We've been in contact with the... With Christensen, the low bidder, and he is going to honor his bid with these reductions. And everybody wants to know when it's going to happen, and the answer on that is asphalt guys show up when they get ready. It will be done maybe as late as October. Okay? But they're pretty good about giving us about a week's notice, let people know and some of that kind of stuff.
That's just so you can get vehicles off of the street where you're going to redo?
All righty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, consider the sewer plant update. Mr. Dunlap?
I'll give two updates. One, we did have a flood sewer plant and no real equipment damage. We kept out of the buildings. Fire department did come down and help, and we do appreciate that very much. Then Sunday, rotor number one broke, and it's back in service now, so...
When he says rotor number one broke, it broke. It didn't just quit. It didn't stop. Wasn't appearing. The rotor itself broke. Pretty unusual. Never seen it.
Where? Is it repairable or what do we do?
Yeah, we had repair parts. It was down by the bottom bearing holder, and the flange broke that holds it to the concrete base. So we did fix it and changed the gearbox on the top side at the same time. The gearbox was leaking bad. So both rotors are back in service. We did use the eight-inch pump to put it on standby in case we did get more rain and rotor number one failed. Everybody remembers it was rotors at the beginning of the plant. You know, nothing happens without the rotors. So a little up down the flood. We do have a meeting with the contractor, the engineer tomorrow with the city, and probably mostly what we're going to talk about is we're starting to worry about their time. Last I heard, the contractor's saying he's a month behind. We're thinking he's a little farther than that. So the engineers tomorrow are bringing a spreadsheet showing the critical path and what time delays they see are time to get materials in. So we're going to have a conversation with the contractor tomorrow, with the engineering firm. So that's the up down sewer plant.
Does that affect some of our time schedules with DNR?
Yes, it does. Kyle and I looked late this afternoon. I believe it was 390 days for substantial completion. They got the work order January 4th, so that's going to be the very first part of February. And I don't remember everything, but the clarifier's supposed to be done, the head works, disinfection. So there's a lot of work to be done before first part of February.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Darrell? Okay. Excellent. We'll now move on to new business. I believe Debbie Baru is with us this evening with the Brick District. Looks like we're going to have a blast. There's a blast every day at the Brick District.
We're going to have another blast, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for letting us come this evening. I'm representing the Brick District, and we are asking for another Brick Blast, where we welcome back our Westminster and William Woods students. We'll do that on Thursday, September the 8th, between four o'clock and seven o'clock. We would like to close off Court Street between Fifth and Sixth. Between... We're thinking we'll close at around 1:30, giving the restaurants an opportunity to get through their lunch hour. We don't want to disrupt their lunch hour and business. So we'll close about 1:30 or so. We'll be set up and ready to roll by 3:30, welcome the students, and then it will be over about seven o'clock, so we've told Chief Myers we'll have the street open again by eight o'clock, if not earlier than that. The main reason for the Brick Blast is because we truly believe in the Brick District and in the city of Fulton. We feel like if our students have a good experience while they're here for the four years that they are at Westminster and William Woods, they'll come back. They'll encourage other students to come. If they have a good experience while they're here, the retention rates will be better at Westminster and William Woods. The revenue will be better for our merchants, for the city. So it's a win-win. Last year, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you came and welcomed the students, and we would appreciate it if you would do the same. We're thinking about 4:30, be there by 4:30. We've also asked Dr. O'Conde and Dr. Barnett to come again this year. They were here last year, and that was one of Dr. O'Conde's first public appearances in downtown Fulton, so Dr. Barnett welcomed him also. So that's what we hope to do. We've not heard back from the presidents as to whether or not their schedules will allow, but I'm sure somebody will be there from Westminster and William Woods to help us welcome them. So what we are requesting is to close the street, close Court Street between Fifth and Sixth, between 1:30 and, say, eight o'clock. We would like to have trash cans and barricades and orange cones to close the streets. If they can be delivered, we'll set them out at 1:30 or so. Questions? And of course, you're all welcome to come and help us welcome the students, show our support.
What do you do for five hours?
Well, between 1:30 and 3:30, we'll set up. We may have a couple of tents. We'll have a... This is Callaway County, so we will have a flatbed trailer pulled in, and that's where we'll set up our DJ. So we'll get the speaker system, all of that set up. We will have a scavenger hunt again, so there may be a few things to set out for the scavenger hunt. That's a way that the students are encouraged to go into the different buildings, the Kingdom of Cavaliers, the Royal Society, and places where they might not necessarily normally go, but could learn something. And then, between four and seven, we'll have the scavenger hunt. We'll have the students... Last year, William Woods allowed their students to earn a half a lead point, so they'll have to sign up for that as soon as they arrive, just to prove that they're there. They will have food. We'll have hot dogs and Baccus potato chips, of course. And then we'll also... The different restaurants. I know Bets and 1851 and Brooklyn Pizza, I know they've already said, yes, they'll help provide food. Post Office Bar and Grill, they always provide their famous hot wings, and they go fast. So... And we'll have music. We'll have the DJ. We'll have... We've... We're talking to one of the communication professors at William Woods about maybe having some of their radio students there, broadcast students there. What an experience. The students could come, the broadcast students could come, they could interview some of the other students, let it broadcast back on their William Woods radio station, interview with the mayor, things like that. They get to know each other, they meet each other. They will have only been on campus maybe three weeks or so. The athletes may be a little bit longer, but that's what we'll do.
Debbie, is everybody familiar with what a lead point is?
A lead point? Several years ago, Dr. Barnett introduced what she calls a lead point. And the students, if they attend different events on campus or maybe in the town, primarily on campus, a concert, a speaker series, athletic events, a play, they can earn a half a point, one point, two point, as they earn... They have to earn a certain amount of points per month. At the end of a semester, they have to have earned a certain amount per semester. At the end of a year, they must have earned a certain amount within that period, and they earn $5,000. Parents encourage their students to attend those events. And it's a learning experience. You know, many of the... Some of the events, they might not be so interested in, but they're going to learn something.
Sure.
It's good for them. It was a very wise move by Dr. Barnett, very wise. So...
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the Brick District's proposal.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve the Brick Blast. Is there any further discussion or any questions for Ms. Baru? Hearing none, call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go on with new business, and it looks like Ms. Carvey is with us this evening with the Humane Society. Couple of you, anyway.
Okay. Hi, I'm Nikki Hartley with the Callaway County Humane Society, and we're here to see if we can get approval for our 5K dog dog again this year. We were up here last year for our second annual. We had a really great turnout. It's just a fundraiser for the Humane Society. We invite everybody to come out to run walks, so not a major rush to the finish line or anything, but just a really nice time to bring your dog out and meet new friends and raise some money for the Humane Society. I think everybody got a copy of the packet I emailed. I'm not for sure if I included a route in that, so I did bring extra copies if anybody's interested. We try to keep it as close to the dog park as possible, so we're not interfering with any kind of traffic or... I would hate to cause any kind of traffic issues with this. I've already given the police chief a copy of everything that we have planned, and we'd love to see everybody out there. If anybody's got any questions?
Just exactly, you say this is a fundraiser. Where does all this money go? Does it go to a vet?
It goes to the Callaway County Humane Society. So it all goes back to the animals that we rescue throughout the county. It goes to feeding the ones that are in foster care. It goes to medical expenses. It goes to help cover fundraising or spay and neuter funds for, you know, animals that are in the community that maybe people don't have the money to spay or neuter their own pets. We try to help out as much as possible with that also.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept this proposal.
Second. Okay, very good. I have a motion in a second to approve the annual dog jog.
How many joggers did you have last year?
Last year, we doubled our numbers last year. The first year, we had around 12. Last year, I meant to look the number up, but I think it was between 25 and 27, somewhere around that number. So, I mean, if the numbers continue to grow, I mean, it's a good fundraiser for us.
Oh, sure.
So we're hoping for nice weather again, so...
Sounds like fun.
Nope, it's fine.
You do understand we don't guarantee good weather.
I do understand that, but anything you can help with would be great.
Six inches of rain wouldn't help down there, would it?
The duck races, maybe, but not...
That's a good idea.
Okay. So now, any further questions? We call for a question. All those in favor of the motion to approve the annual dog jog, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, looks like we're going to do it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Good luck with your event.
Thanks.
Now, move on to Mr. Barnes is getting up. He's going to fill us in on the rain.
Well, I'm going to try. I think most...
Or the after effects of rain.
I got to lower this so the guy that's with me can actually speak to you here.
Damn.
I have with me Glenn Price. He's the new claims and litigation director for Marmo, and I'm going to have him speak here as part of my report just momentarily. Set the stage just real briefly. Obviously, we all know it rained last week. It rained a pretty considerable amount. I think that actual amount varies depending upon where you had a cup of coffee last week, because the tails just kept getting bigger as the week went on. I don't want to make light of a pretty bad situation for a lot of property owners in town. They experienced... And I don't know how many people exactly. Quite a few people had water in their basement, either groundwater flowing in, some entering through floor drains. Frankly, there just was not a spot left in the town, I don't believe, where water was not. It was looking for every crevice it could possibly find to relieve a little bit of pressure. I've lived here quite a while, and I know most of this group will say the same thing. There were streets closed last week that I don't remember ever being closed. Water standing in places, I don't remember water standing like it was. Just a couple of the thoughts real quick. I certainly want to thank the employees, the many departments that responded in the wee hours of the morning. I think some of them showed up 3:30, four o'clock at the wastewater plant. I know the fire department was engaged, the police department was. Street departments were putting barricades up. Some folks were driving around those barricades, which then gave some work for the police department. Fire department, I think, had a fire 6:00 AM, as if there wasn't enough going on. Again, before I hand this over to Glenn, just another tidbit of information, we looked at... I looked at, it seemed like hundreds of property owners' basements last week. It wasn't that bad. It must have just taken more time and caused me a great deal of concern, and it's a process to go through, and it's never any fun to see folks that have lost property contents, you know, precious things that were stuck in their basements for safekeeping. So a few property owners asked the city to file a claim on their behalf, which would facilitate an investigation in a particular area as to see what liability the city may had, whether something wasn't maintained properly. Most of those claims have been responded to, which is why Glenn's here, and he's going to touch on those. I think there probably is still one, one, two still outstanding, and those are being looked at at this... Not at this hour, but still going forward. We decided last week, kind of on a... Just a side note, JC's department was receiving so many phone calls from folks that had waterlogged property and a desire to try to get rid of that, that we decide... We were getting so many phone calls that we kind of decided to do a summer cleanup for folks to put stuff out this week, and that we would pick it up and haul it away. We felt that was the right thing to do due to the volume of calls. JC said, and I shouldn't quote him, but I think he said something about, yeah, we're probably... They were probably getting 40, 50 calls a day, which was a big number when you multiply that out throughout the week. Probably a few hundred people called with things that they needed to dispose of. So again, we felt that was the right thing to do. With that, I don't think I had any other notes that I missed. Let me have Glenn Price kind of respond to the liability claims that were filed on behalf of our citizens.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to come in and discuss this scenario with you guys. One of the greatest joys I have as an insurance adjuster is to be able to help people out when we can help people out. One of the greatest difficulties, though, is times like these when there's instances where we can't help people out, or it's not feasible for us to. In this case, we had about 5.7 inches of rainfall, six inches of rainfall in this short period of time, which caused an inundation, as you guys know, of the city streets and of particular systems. Because of the inundation of that, those claims were... Have been denied. Now, there is one claim that has not yet been truly reviewed yet, and that's because it just got turned in. The adjuster that it's most likely going to be assigned to is on vacation, so I'm going to have that reassigned so that it can get looked into quickly and right away. Some of the things we look at when determining whether or not a city is negligent or liable for a particular scenario such as this deals with amount of rainfall at times. And in a case where six inches of rain fell in about eight hours, that's just too much for one particular city normally to handle. Also, the things that we look at are just the history of how the city maintains the systems, maintains their work, their city, and that sort of thing. And it's pretty clear the city of Fulton annually maintains the city pretty well, so there's no aspect of that really coming into play as far as these things. So based upon how well the city normally maintains the systems, the inordinate amount of rainfall, we did not feel that the city would be negligent for that sort of thing, so that's why we denied the sewer claims or the flood claims that we had come in so far. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
All of those houses on Second Street, and Stinson Creek runs right behind them. Do they qualify for any of this that you're talking about as far as insurance is concerned? They know it's going to flood. It's a low area. It's a flood area.
Right. Now, are you talking in reference to their homeowner's claim?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That would be something that depends on how their homeowner's policy is set up. Some would be set up that way, and some cases, they would be required to go through the federal government for that.
But it wouldn't have anything specifically to do with you?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Correct.
None of those properties on Second Street conflict with the city.
Okay.
Mary, do you have a question?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Price? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
All you do for us.
My pleasure.
All right, very good. That's all the new business and unfinished business we had, and at this time, we've set aside a time for council members to bring their concerns or any matter that they'd like to be discussed that's not on the agenda forward.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I thought you said, oh, one debate?
Am I missing something?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was holding my hand up that I had a concern when you was ready.
He's ready.
Okay. See, so I guess, we'll just start with you, Rick. Do you have anything you'd like to bring forward?
Just one item. A couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, we had a report from the Traffic Commission about the west side of what, Seventh Street? Or west side of Hickman Avenue?
Okay.
And I was just wondering if, were we planning to do anything about that, or should we set up an ordinance for the west side?
I can tell you, that's something Kyle and I have kind of been working on together to get the specifics of it and get it all hammered out, so I do plan on that being on, if not the next agenda, definitely by the following one. So, it is in the works.
Okay, that's the only question I have. Thanks.
Thanks for staying on top of that. Anything else?
No, we're on the same subject.
Mr. Moore?
I have nothing. We're on the same subject.
Is that yours? How about you, Mr. Vaughn?
I don't think I have anything.
Ms. Gray?
Well, this is just, I wanted to thank the street crews and everybody that's out. The roundabout was like totally flooded. There was no way, there at Westminster, where the lake is, that was, down by McIntyre School, that was a mess. So, congratulations, guy, good job. Also, Friday, if you didn't get there, the United Way event thing was very successful, very good. A lot of good people were there. They did some online auction stuff. It was just a very good event. So, if you missed it, you really missed something. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lyle?
I appreciate everyone involved that worked out the asphalt situation. It sounded like we had some tough decisions there, but I'm glad to see that the road to the warehouse is getting paved. That's, that's great. So, that's all I got.
Yes, I do have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say that I've been dealing with the C Highway and Tennyson intersection out there. Worried about the speed limit, 50 miles an hour, moving during the state. And as of today, there is a new sign put up on the Tennyson facing C Highway that states the cross traffic does not stop. So, so far, that's what we've got from the state, so I wanted everyone to be aware of that. Some help.
Something.
Some help, that's right. And another thing is, I had a constituent call me, she lives on First Street, and it's a very short little street, two blocks. There is no speed limit posted on that street, and therefore, the speed limit would be 30 miles an hour, if it's not posted. It's two blocks, it's a dead end street. Very concerned about the speed limit there with such a short area, and they're doing it 30 mile an hour. Also, when you come, between 5:00 and 7:00 in the evening, when they're coming on from the hospital workers and so on, they're, instead of coming up to the four-way stop on First Street, or Second Street, and the four-way stop, they're cutting on Addison, turning left on Addison, coming through, hitting that First Street, and the awful lot of traffic through there. You've got no speed limit posted, so therefore, there seems to be quite a problem there. I would like to see if possibly our police could monitor that a little bit, and maybe the Traffic Commission might consider looking at that.
Sure.
Speed limit in that area.
Addison is only about a block long, isn't it?
One block. They come in there, cut, and go this way, and they bypass the four-way stop.
Getting off work and ready, don't wanna wait.
Exactly. Don't wanna wait.
So, they're missing that stop sign.
Yeah, cut through that residential on through, yeah.
We'll pass that on Traffic Commission, and the chief's part of that, so.
Thank you.
That should cover both items. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Wayne?
Not a thank.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to resolutions. Our first resolution, number 3258, has to do with a contract with Christianson Construction. Councilman Schibberdecker, would you please present this for consideration?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3258, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for the 2016 asphalt overlay project at an estimated value of $450,000, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract. Make a motion, we adopt resolution number 3258 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to adopt resolution 3258. Is there any further discussion or question on that resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll now consider resolution number 3259, which is a resolution having to do with a contract with HDR Engineering, which concerns our negotiations with Missouri Department of Revenue, or, excuse me, Department of Resource, Natural Resources. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present resolution 3259?
Resolution number 3259, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on the behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with HRD Engineering Incorporated, or HDR, excuse me, Engineering Incorporated, of Lee Summit, Missouri, for the 2016 Stinson Creek TMDL implementation negotiation project, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract. I make a motion to adopt resolution 3259 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to adopt 3259. Is there any further discussion or questions on this resolution?
I just have one. This mentions Stinson Creek. Is this all of the creek or just down by the water treatment plant?
I'll let Kyle jump on that. I would say it's probably just above the treatment plant. Go ahead.
Yeah, this mainly concerns above the treatment plant, but all of Stinson Creek is kind of intertwined in this subject, but this particular matter is, Darryl gave you a report on the wastewater treatment plant progress, and the, how healthy the creek is after the treatment plant. This is how DNR and we determine that, and so it's mainly tied to the wastewater treatment plant.
Because I was just wondering, sometimes-
I wanna follow up on that just a little bit, though. We have to find out what the, it is, it is to determine the health of the creek, but we also want to determine the impact that our sewer plant is having on the creek.
Right.
So, in order for us to determine the impact we're having, there will be some testing done above the creek, above the sewer plant, of the water before it gets there, so we can find out, is it already dirty? Is it, does it already have low oxygen and high suspended solids? And then we will test it below the wastewater treatment plant to see how our effluent is changing the quality of the water.
I just know the school kids, a lot of times, will go down and do a science study on the quality of the Stinson Creek.
Right.
And that's why I was wondering, is this is all gonna affect the entire creek or what?
Yeah.
Just to kind of take another step back a little further, if you recall, the main thing this was all, came about was when Missouri Department of Natural Resources and EPA were trying to give us emission standards for our sewer plant that were technologically unattainable, according to our consultants. And so, therefore, we fought this for about two years, and we finally got it to work. Now, it's negotiable. So, that's what this is all about, is to make sure that we can continue to get a reasonable emission standard from, and that's not the proper term, TMDL.
But it is workable now. Whereas before, it was cut and dry.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, Beverly, we're trying to work with DNR to include a test that's right above Fulton, if you will, on Stinson Creek, to quantify what's coming into Fulton, along with what's in Fulton, and then wastewater treatment plant. So, we're trying to add that, add that to their testing of the stream, because we think it'd be beneficial, but that would, that's part of a negotiation that we'll have to have in a few months, so.
Okay, very good, thank you, Kyle. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor of adopting resolution 3259, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Now, I consider resolution number 3260, which is a resolution that approves or adopts our results from our election on August the 2nd. And Councilman Campbell, would you please present this resolution?
Sure will. Resolution number 3260, whereas a primary election was held in the city of Fulton, Missouri, on the second day of August 2016, and whereas the county clerk of Callaway County, Missouri, has certified to the city clerk the results of the primary election held on the above date, and whereas the council finds that the following votes were cast too wet. Question, shall the city of Fulton continue applying and collecting the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer? Continuation of this measure will not result in reduction of local revenue to provide for vital services for the city of Fulton, and it will not place Missouri dealers of motor vehicles, outboard motors, boats, and trailers at a competitive disadvantage to non-Missouri dealers of motor vehicles, outboard motors, boats, and trailers. Yes, votes 1,030, no, 496. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, that the city finds that the tax continuation question passed. I move that we adopt resolution 3260 tonight.
Second. Thank you, appreciate it. At this time, I'd like, before we go any further, is to thank the citizens of Fulton, again, for the support in what I call a housekeeping measure in continuing this tax. We appreciate their support. Okay, so is there any other questions on resolution 3260? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing resolution 3260, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll now move on to ordinance, ordinances, anyway, you know what I mean. And we'll look at first reading ordinances, and Councilman Shyland, would you please present 1458 for first reading, which has to do with tax rates for next year, by title only?
I would proudly elect to give this reading. As long as I've been here, I've never had anything lowering the tax rate. Bill number 1458, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and leveling taxes for the calendar year of 2016 on all taxable property in the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I move that bill number 1458 be forwarded to our next regular scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion to advance bill number 1458 for second reading. Is there any discussion of that motion?
I just have a question. The apartments that are built there on Tyler, behind McDonald's, does that affect their property valuation, the residents that are already there?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
Wasn't the tax rate different than now that it was when it was handed down?
The one, the handout was the corrected version.
Ms. Caddie, do you wanna address this at all?
What happened was that the county sent out a notice telling us what the tax rate would be, and then probably several weeks later, they sent out a corrected version that said they'd made an error on the amount of new construction, which gave us a different tax rate. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
It's just, it's a combination of the state of Missouri and the county building that tell us what we can collect. We really don't have a role in establishing what our tax rate is. We don't submit or ask or tell anything.
If there's not any other questions, I'm gonna call for the question. All those in favor of advancing bill 1458, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you. That does it for first reading. We'll do it, we'll now consider second reading ordinances, and we'll consider bill number 1456, which has to do with the repeal of rummage sale permits. And Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present bill number 1456, title only?
Yes, I would like to present second and third reading tonight. Okay.
Sure.
Bill number 1456, an ordinance repealing Chapter 90, Article 2, Rummage Sale Section 90-28 and 90-29, Fulton City Code, to remove the requirements for a rummage sale permit and establish an effective date. I'd like to make a motion that bill number 1456 be read for the third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to advance bill number 1456. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 1456 for third reading?
Yes, bill number 1456, and ordinance repealing Chapter 90, Article 2, Rummage Sale, Section 90-28, 90-29, Fulton City Code, to remove the requirements for a rummage sale permit and establish the effective date. I make a motion to place bill number 1456 for final passage at the same meeting.
Tonight.
Tonight, thanks.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to advance bill number 1456 to final. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Did I hear a no? Okay, thank you. Very good. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay, thank you. Well, now, you've heard bill number 1456 presented three times, it's now time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no at a roll call. Lieutenant Clerk?
Okay, Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, seven council members affirmative, one absent.
It probably cost the city more than-
We're gonna lose that great amount of revenue.
It did.
Okay.
Bill's getting ready to have a-
Thank you.
For the newspaper's benefit, if anybody's having a garage sale this coming weekend, they don't need a permit. Or the weekend after that, or for hopefully ever again.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents.
It's been fifty cents to register. Now you're.
Garage sale permit.
For garage sales, yard sales. Yeah, well, to get the permit.
Not anymore.
Not now.
Not anymore.
Forget it, Jen, just pass on.
Welcome garage sale.
Question? There's only four?
Sure. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Yes.
So we didn't repeal that one, huh?
No.
We did not repeal the, limit of four year.
Four years, a limit.
So the garage sale police are counting how many sales out.
That's Steve's job.
That's a good point. Thanks for making that.
Exactly, it is a good point.
It's probably a complaint.
We do not encourage anyone to abuse that. Okay.
It'd be sick to have more than one.
Well, that is time to collect taxes.
Let's move on to bill number 1457, which is an ordinance that, again, is more or less housekeeping, which cleans up some parking issues, or parking ordinances. Councilman Moore, would you please present 1457, second reading?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Lohman.
No objections, I will read this second and third this evening. Bill number 1457, ordinance repealing ordinance numbers 1373-14, 1383-15, 1390-15, 1394-15, and 1395-15, amendment chapter 110, traffic and vehicles incorporated, new ordinance, establish an effective date. Move for third reading at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second. Very good. We have a motion, in the second, to advance 1457 for a reading. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I believe last time, Mr. Johnson said this was already in effect, we were just kinda cleaning up a bit?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. So all those in favor advancing 1457, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Councilman Moore, would you please present bill number 1457, third reading?
Bill number 1457, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 1373-14, 1383-15, 1390-15, 1394-15, and 1395-15, amendment chapter 110, traffic and vehicles incorporated, new ordinance, establish an effective date. Move this for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion, in the second, to advance bill number 1457 for final consideration. Is there any discussion? Again, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. You've heard bill number 1457 read three times, and it's now time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no to roll call. Adam Clark?
Okay, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Cannel?
Yes.
And Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Okay, very good, thank you. That does it for ordinances, and we'll, I do not have any appointments this evening. You do have an announcement on your agenda, please note that, make sure you all are prepared for that one. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening.
Okay.
Does any, well, before I run on to that, does anybody else have any announcements they wanna make?
If anyone has any questions regarding their MML package, feel free to come see me after the meeting, and we can go over anything you need clarification.
Now, when are we gonna discuss this, or are we going to?
Work session.
Work session, yes.
Zimmerman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Work session.
Okay. You want that for the work session? Okay. We'll consider that in the work session here this evening, because we do not have anything else. So that's why I was getting ready to ask. And thank you, Ms. Gray, for bringing that up. Okay, very good. So at this point, I'll consider a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, in the second, for adjournment. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Do you want a five-minute break, or you wanna just?